Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Village of Deerfield Police Department's meeting Tuesday, January 2, 2024. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg is not here. Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders is not here. Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Seiden is not here. Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
We have a call.
Is Bertie Berg here by remote?
No.
Nothing. Okay. We do have a call, Jerry?
Yes, we do.
All right. I would ask you now to all please stand before the pledge of allegiance. And I would ask that Sergeant Paterelli and Officer Maldonado both read us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Speaking of Sergeant Paterelli and Officer Maldonado, I'd like to ask the chief to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. It's been a fairly eventful day for this department. Today, we're swearing in three new police officers this morning. The festivities could be this evening with some early recognition of members of the department. Some of this is a little bit of housekeeping.
Careful, we got to make sure John gets every word in because he's unlikely to get that in.
My mic wasn't on either so we can start the whole meeting longer.
Where's the battery when you need it?
I think this is the only way to silence John is to have a technical difficulty.
The event will continue.
Perhaps it was sabotage.
You went to holidays, too? Testing.
There you go.
Okay, it wasn't me. But as we were saying, we had an eventful morning with swearing in some new officers. In fact, Drew joined here tonight. Kylie, not to embarrass you, but our newest dispatcher, Kylie Buscher, has joined us along with other members of the department. And as I started to say, some of this is housekeeping. We're presenting the Donald Garrick Award to two officers. It's an annual award that's presented, but we continue to seem to blame COVID for anything that fell through the cracks, but it really did. So we're just trying to get up, get caught up with the proper recognition to officers that have earned it and deserved it and appreciated by the Police Commission and certainly you folks. We appreciate what you do every day as well. A little bit about the Donald D. Garrick Memorial Award. As we said, it's an annual award presented by the Police Commission to recognize one officer or civilian employee for outstanding police service. Donald Garrick served for several years on the Board of Police Commissioners, ending January 1, 1972. His interest and concern for the department was well-known to all those that worked with him during that time. To honor him, the Village of Deerfield, through its Board of Police Commissioners, recognizes one employee for outstanding service each year. This may refer to one outstanding act by a department member or continuous outstanding performance throughout that year. Included in the final selection are loyalty and dedication to the objectives of the Deerfield Police Department. And as we go through this evening, I think you'll see that clearly in both of these candidates. So we will start with the 2021 Award, which is being presented to Sergeant Steve Paterelli. You can step up here and join me if you want. A little bit about Steve before we get into the award itself. He began his employment with the Deerfield Police Department 25 years ago when he was hired as a part-time dispatcher, in 1998 transitioning to full-time dispatch in 1999. That becomes important here a little bit more later when we talk about how his career has continued during that time. Hired by a police officer, as a police officer by the department February 1 of 2000. Served in patrol, worked as an undercover drug assignment with Lake County Metropolitan Enforcement Group in our investigation section and currently holds the rank of police sergeant. And Steve was recently assigned the duties of Director of Communications. As you can see, it's a logical choice based on his experience in dispatch, patrol, and the expertise and the technical side of it. We affectionately refer to him as our radio geek. And the award itself is based largely on his expertise in that area. As for the award itself, the commission recognized Sergeant Paterelli for his research, development, and leadership that led to the successful transition to the Starcom radio system being implemented by the Deerfield Police Department. Paterelli spearheaded the project, worked tirelessly to ensure efficient and effective implementation, including feedback to achieve optimal results, holding the vendor accountable for improvements, and creating and implementing ongoing training to ensure its overall success. As you recall from, as we've stood up here before, with the implementation of the Starcom, it's an important thing in law enforcement. And it brought us into the current ages of radio use and technology, gave us interoperability throughout the state. So it really was a big deal, and it was Steve was the driving force behind that. And the commission recognizes that and award him accordingly. He is a member of the Interoperable Communications Council of Lake County. I can only imagine what those meetings are like, but we won't get into it. Always willing to help with department initiatives, including the purchase of vehicles when needed, video productions. There's not many retirement parties that goes by that Steve doesn't have some input into that. Police recruitment, and the implementation of the department's drone program most recently. So having said that, Steve, I would like to present you with the Donald Garrick Memorial Award for 2021. And it reads, "Presented by the Deerfield Board of Police Commissioners for your allegiance to the agency and the community at large, through your hard work, dedication, and the numerous community service-related duties you perform, 2021 for outstanding service."
Thank you.
Great job. A few more things, two words, four words, three? Short, just a few.
Thank you very much for recognizing my efforts during my career. I always took pride in my job, and I was mentored early on in my career by previous commanders, obviously retired since then. But they always said, always help out your PD, always try to take on special projects because it goes a long way. Just don't show up for work and put your eight hours in and go home. Always go above and beyond. And I do like the technical side of things when it comes to communication, so it's a nice fit for me starting out as the director right now. And I got a great group of dispatchers with me, so it's a good fit. So thank you for recognizing me. Appreciate it.
That brings us to 2022, how time flies. For 2022, the Police Commission is recognizing Officer Lauren Maldonado for the work she done and the recognition for her efforts during that time period. Little bit about Lauren before we get into the award side of it. Grew up on the north side of Chicago, attended high school in Willmette at Regina Dominican, attended Bucknell University in Pennsylvania where she played college basketball, also served as the team's co-captain during part of that career. Began her career as a teacher, which again will come into play here shortly, which included stops in Lake Forest, North Chicago, and some other places in between. So before she even came here, had quite a storied career and some experience that has paid great dividends to us and the school district as well. She joined the Police Department on September 18, 2017. And looking through your file this evening, I saw that it was actually five years ago today you were certified as a law enforcement officer. Currently serves as a School Resource Officer in District 109, has used her past experience and knowledge and training as a patrol officer and teacher to formulate and develop the School Resource Officer position. Lauren was the first School Resource Officer in the Great School District. I think they have benefited tremendously based with that experience that she brought from the teaching side and her approach to the law enforcement side. It was a great combination and being the first one, she's kind of built that foundation for those to come, which will make it much easier for everybody moving on. And again, the commission has selected Officer Lauren Maldonado as a recipient of the award for her ability to always represent the Deerfield Police Department in a positive light, whether in her role as patrol officer, School Resource Officer, or bike officer. As a School Resource Officer, Lauren has done an outstanding job working with the district. The district routinely talks about her experience and the benefits they have and how it was a perfect fit from day one. Lauren was one of several people that gave great effort to make the department's Pink Patch Project to benefit breast cancer patients a success by serving as the primary contact with the Cancer Wellness Center. She also worked tirelessly to coordinate community roll calls during 2022, spearheaded the Third Annual Kramma Cruiser Food Driver Campaign, and expanded the event to include donations of personal care items for at-risk veterans. Volunteers timed for other departments' events as well, including Special Olympics Torch Run, Coffee with a Cop, and a myriad of other events. So as you can see from that combination of things, well-deserving of this award, brings a lot to the table, greatly appreciated by the school district, greatly appreciated by the Police Department myself, and we congratulate you.
Thank you.
Say thank you. And while I'm doing this, before we get started, you might have some guests you want to introduce?
Yes, this is my husband Zeus. Riley, who's in first grade, RJ, who's in preschool, and Reagan, who will be two months tomorrow. So I'm not back to work yet. Coming back.
What are you doing with your time?
Just a little, just a little, a couple things.
This may sound familiar, but it reads, "Presented by the Deerfield Board of Police Commissioners for your allegiance to the agency and the community at large, through your hard work, dedication, and the numerous community service-related duties you perform, for outstanding service in 2022."
Wow.
You can say a few words.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. It's great to be back. It's great to see familiar faces. It's very motivating to continue into the new year, receiving this award and having a lot of new, fresh ideas to connect the community with our police department. It's a joy to be in the schools and have that connection with the department and be able to connect our families and have a better view of police overall. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
And again, I would like to congratulate both these officers for the award. As we went through these presentations, you could see well-deserved, the work that they put into this, not only during their, I'll say, routine day, but well above and beyond that. And that's why they're both presented here to you tonight because of that work that they do on a regular basis. They're appreciated. Again, we appreciate the staff that's here to participate, and we thank them as well. And we thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Great job.
Before we get to the Administration Department report, I, and maybe you guys just want to hang out for one second, I got a word or two about you guys, too. I know it's cold and you want to get home and in your pajamas, whatever.
And schoolwork.
And schoolwork, whatever. But I want to congratulate you two as well. It always amazes me the support that the men and women of the department get when there's something like this or swearing in earlier today or other achievements and other recognitions. It speaks so highly of the department and highly of you two that this room is full of supporters from the department, family, friends, to see your achievement tonight. So thank you again and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now we can do our homework.
So cute.
Oh, my God.
Could you just leave the baby?
She's going to say yes.
Turn around. Oh.
Love it.
She knows we're looking at her.
You have a beautiful family.
You do.
Thank you, Lauren.
So sweet.
Justin, that's a tough act to follow.
Good luck, buddy.
You cleared the room, Justin.
You need to bring your kid next time. Bring your baby.
Yeah, bring your kids.
Bring Jack.
Get a beret.
It's his bedtime right now.
Get a beret.
Jack better be sleeping right now.
Let's give Justin the floor here for a second. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to present a brief overview of the Administration Department's 2023 Annual Report, starting with Village Communications. So the Village Communications efforts continue to grow this year and improved our outreach to the public. Subscribers to the weekly e-blast surpassed 3,000 emails this year, and the e-blast was opened over 111,000 times in 2023. Facebook followers have increased by 8%, and that Instagram reach grew by 34.4%.
Hey, Justin, can I just ask you a favor? Until they clear out, can you just talk a little louder because it's hard to hear?
Yep, absolutely. The Village website redesign went live in January 2023 with a new and refreshed look that staff are very proud of, and staff worked with Deerfield-based graphic designer Amy Charleston to perform a total redesign of the Details newsletter, so going from the two-color to the four-color newsletter, which also looks really, really good. And thanks to David for that. Moving to General Government Operations, staff updated and modernized the liquor code as the restaurant and bar industry changed post-pandemic. We did that early this year, along with moving gender-based acronyms. Oversaw the local election filing process for the April 4, 2023 consolidated election. Supported efforts to establish TIF District Number Three to promote the economic vitality of the Village Center, along with researching, developing, and drafting the redevelopment plan and the eligibility study for the proposed TIF District Number Four, which is on Lake Cook Road. In addition to the TIF districts, staff regularly work with Mayor Shapiro and various intergovernmental partners such as the DBR Chamber of Commerce on a number of economic development matters to proactively retain and attract businesses and new residents. Staff installed the remaining digital parking pay station at the Deerfield Metro Station and removed the outdated cash boxes, which has definitely eased paying for parking at the station. Staff planned the Second Annual Food Truck Wednesday Summer Series, which included local food vendors, kids' activities, and live music. My favorite thing I did this year, the Cemetery Commission hired a contractor to use ground penetrating radar to survey three plots in the historic Deerfield Cemetery. We've now surveyed about a fifth of the cemetery, which is extremely helpful since about a third of the headstones no longer exist. So we are locating as, I was contacted a few weeks ago by a family member who has the original deed from 1889 and would like to be buried in the cemetery. So first time I've seen an actual, authentic deed. So people still are actively or will be one day buried in the cemetery. So we need to know where the bodies are. Staff coordinated the issuance of 38 liquor licenses in the village and ensured all persons listed on the license passed the required Police Department background checks. And the Fine Arts Commission brought back the Deerfield Art Festival after a multi-year hiatus this year. And the Community Relations Commission completed the full year of its Heritage Month Celebration Program in 2023. In total, they coordinated and highlighted programs, events, and lectures for seven heritage months this year. Moving to IT, the IT department helped complete the police dispatch remodel and upgrade project, which was quite the undertaking for IT. They coordinated with multiple departments and created and brought online over a dozen open gov permits as the CD department moves for all online permits over the next few years. As part of the village's ongoing cybersecurity awareness program, the IT Division provided 12 monthly cybersecurity awareness trainings, which everyone received this morning, so please complete your IT training for the month of January if you haven't already. And they processed 3,437 work orders from January 1 to December 19. That, you know, again, it's just a brief overview. As always, staff appreciate the support from the mayor and the board. And with that, are there any questions?
We appreciate your hard work. Any questions for Justin?
I do want to say kudos for the newsletter. It really is a great upgrade.
Absolutely.
It looks nice, and I have had comments from other residents.
And especially with the new housing permit photo, things like that could never be included in details before, but now you can include more pictures and graphs and charts and things like that that really stand out.
Right.
Yeah, I think Amy and David did a terrific job with that, and huge improvement.
And that's the first time we've read that since 1986.
And it could be where people noticed.
No, I'm serious. The reformatting was since 1986 because when I got here, that's what we did.
Yeah.
In 37 years, we'll do it again.
Good luck, Your Honor. But thank you. Thank you for the recognition, and thank you to David and Amy and the team for getting there because it's, and it's still a lot of work ongoing because every issue is like redoing every issue.
Right.
Because you don't do just what you did before. You're redoing it.
But it's a new world communication-wise.
Totally, totally.
And there are things that people want to hear about that we never communicated about before.
And the way that they see it, that's different than you and I see.
Exactly.
And the way we're communicating is all new.
Right. So it's got to help. It's got to be more effective, and it's great to look at. So kudos.
Personal thanks to staff for all this, but Justin, many of the things you mentioned, you spearheaded, and you did a great job on those things. So just want to acknowledge your great efforts, too.
Thank you for the poutine truck.
I believe it's coming back for next year, so we're excited. I'll let you know what dates they'll be there.
You did not eat it with the fat shallot truck?
Fat shallot will also be there.
Thank you.
Other than fat shallot or other trucks, does anyone have any questions for Justin?
All right, thank you very much.
Next order of business, I'd like to appoint Rick Opad to the Board of Zoning Appeals. He came to us through a recommendation of the Volunteer Engagement Committee. I thought I saw, he's not here, I thought I saw Bob from the CBA, maybe, whatever. But I'm looking for a motion to approve him.
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Minutes of the previous meeting of December 18, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have no one signed up for public comment, and it doesn't look like anyone is here in the audience for public comment. We'll move on to reports. Item 2401, consideration and action on a report and recommendation of staff regarding paid parental leave. Desiree.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you. So following our recent committee of the whole meeting, staff was asked to take a closer look at the potential impacts of a paid parental leave. So we went ahead and did that. With this policy affecting full-time, non-union staff, we're actually looking at under 20 people that this would affect who are under the age of 40. So looking at that group of people, when we talk about the new moms who make up over half of that number, those individuals are already taking 12 weeks of leave. So at that point in time, we're really looking at, is it their accruals that they're using or is it village, you know, time that's being paid? We're not, we're going to see an impact on, you know, needing to cover, well, needing to cover those shifts, of course, but it's something that's happening anyway. So that would be the 12 weeks. Now, of course, with paid time by the village, we would have a little extra time in the bank that could be used later for vacationing or other medical requirements that, you know, the family would need, which is kind of what I think we're going for, the objective of this policy. When you look at the new fathers for this, we're looking at fathers who are taking an average of about three and a half weeks over the last 12 months. We've seen an increase of those weeks as time has progressed. So we're at about three and a half if I looked at 2023. So there may be an additional two and a half weeks of leave that may need to be covered. So at that point in time, you're looking at just operational costs if it's an employee who's salaried and, you know, depending on what they're doing, hourly would have overtime impacts or unless outside contractors need to be covered. So really, the impact is about two and a half weeks that we'd be looking at that could possibly change from what's happening today versus what's happening if the policy were to be implemented. Let's see. So with that, we kind of put together this proposed language that we worked with the Village Attorney on, the Labor Attorney, and we came up, just to summarize, that we're looking at full-time, non-union staff for this. The unions would have the ability to negotiate with their next contract, which is up at the end of 2025. We talked about six weeks of paid leave for the birth of a baby or adoption of a child. With discussion with staff, we actually decreased the time that it would be eligible from one year to six months, thinking that if an individual wanted to take two weeks off and then wanted to try to take every single Friday or take another day off, we would be able to condense that to six months instead of have that spread over a whole year. That really still gives people time to, if one parent wants to take, you know, who works for another company wants to take their 12 weeks, then maybe one of our employees wants to take 12 weeks, that still fits within the six-month kind of time period we're looking at. The goal is for bonding, you know, we want them to be bonding with their children, maybe recovering physically, but it's not really to extend like a childcare situation or something like that. So we did change from the committee of the whole, we talked to 12 months, we condensed that to six. And then finally, this time will be available upon hire, which is what we discussed at the committee of hold as well, no waiting period of any kind. And then also, this would be a pilot program, which would be reevaluated no later than December 2025, as if we want to extend that or not. With the two years, that gives us a good sample size, I think, of, you know, pregnancies and working through and seeing what kind of situations come about. And I'm here for any questions if you would like to discuss further.
Questions for Desiree.
So the six weeks, they're not consecutive?
So you can take consecutive leave or intermittent. With FMLA, it's basically consecutive you're entitled to, intermittent is at the discretion of your department head supervisor type thing. So if an individual in this policy wanted to take, you know, two weeks now and then four weeks later, they can do that as long as within six months of the date of the event. So maybe two weeks to help with recovery, and then they're going to do four a little bit later after mom goes back to work, kind of a situation.
Right. You alternate with your wife, your husband, and you figure something, maybe there's a game plan where you.
But we just want to discourage the intermittent as much as possible.
Right, right. Because then it becomes a vacation-type thing. I don't want to work on Fridays.
Right. Right. So that's why we kind of shorten that time.
Yeah, I think that was wise.
I think it's fair, yeah.
And so because this will not be covered, this will not cover our employees who are currently in the union, how many additional people are we looking at when they come, when the union comes and wants to bargain this?
We have a little over 60 that are union, and our total employees are 115-ish. Now, of those 60, there's, you know, there's probably a quarter of those that are under the age of 40.
Right. So we're talking mainly basically the same percentage, the same number of people we're talking about covering with this.
So those are the Public Works folks.
So it's covering 20 now?
Right. It'll be another 15 or 20.
But not police.
Police same, so.
But that's an additional number. When you gave the number, that was for Public Works.
The number 60 is union, that's Public Works and police. That's the total of all ages.
So and remember, Public Works operators and police officers are the only unionized. So non-dispatchers, records, those aren't unionized police people? So there's sizable numbers of both groups that aren't.
Well, the reason I ask is that it's interesting that, you know, we want to reevaluate this after sort of a trial period, which would come up at the same time as the union, as the contracts are being renegotiated. So we'll have information, and that could be very useful for us, for both sides.
Did you want to say something, Steve? Oh, okay. And that is good timing. Was that intentional?
I think two years.
Or did it just kind of coincidentally?
That's what we talked about, was two years.
No, we thought about it.
Right. And Glenn Coe, speaking with Glenn Coe, that was her recommendation, you know, she said, don't do one year. You think, that sounds automatic, one year, but two-year really gives you a better sample size.
Okay.
To see what's going on.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the report and recommendation regarding the paid parental leave? So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, nothing. Old business, nothing. New business, nothing. Which takes us down to items for discussion by Mayor and Board of Trustees. I got a couple of things. First of all, I did have the opportunity to swear in three new police officers today, and I'd like to just read a little bit about them because it was my honor to do so. Today, I read the oath of office and swore in police officers Larry Ben Wilson, who comes to Deerfield from Springfield, Missouri, and brings 10 years of police experience with the Springfield Police Department. I read the oath of office and swore in Police Officers Larry Ben Wilson, who comes to Deerfield from Springfield, Missouri, and brings 10 years of police experience with the Springfield Police Department. Officer Andri Kuzniak is from the Ukraine and has lived in the United States for the last 10 years. He is a graduate of National Lucy University. And Patrick Strickland, who grew up in Northbrook in a law enforcement family with his father retiring from the Northbrook Police Department as deputy chief. Patrick graduated from the University of Illinois. Andri and Patrick will report to the Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center on January 7th, and Ben's first day will be January 15th, when he begins his field training. I also would like to congratulate our new deputy village manager, Andrew Lichterman, our new assistant village manager, Justin Keenan, there you are, and our new director of administrative services, Desiree Thor. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Van Thor.
What?
Van Thor.
Van Thor, yeah, sorry. Sorry. I messed up there. That usually happens to me. So congratulations to all of you. Your promotions and your new titles are well-deserved.
Congratulations, guys.
That's all I have for my comments. And again, I'm sorry for messing up your last name. Any comments from the board? Kent?
No, sir.
All right. I will seek a motion to adjourn at 8:03.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's adjourned.